So there is a quorum.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, we got it, yeah.
On air. Welcome, I would like to welcome everybody to the Town of Burwick Planning Board meeting for Thursday, November 20th, 2025. If you would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Many flags to choose from. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, introduction of board members. To my left, we have Rick Reins, Don Ganarelli. Our chairman, Michael Ru, is absent today. We've got Niles Shore on the right, Daniel Hook, James Felissimo, and Terry Wilson, our co-enforcement officer, and various members of the public and engineers. Going to open the first public comment session. The public comment session is limited to non-agenda items. Anybody? Seeing nobody come up, we're going to close that and move on to the approval of minutes. So we have two sets of minutes to approve tonight. Looks like we have quorums for each. So we'll start with the October 2nd, 2025 minutes.
I read those earlier today and would like to motion that find them complete and accurate.
I'll second that.
All right, thank you. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Everybody in favor of approving those minutes? Anybody opposed and abstaining? Thank you. Moving on to the November 6th, 2025 minutes. I did have one amendment to make that I already brought up to James, but I will make it publicly. It did say that for the application completedness of the major subdivision, 17 lots off School Street, it said that Niles Shore and I abstained from voting and we opposed that vote. So that amendment will take place. Anybody else have any changes for that?
I wasn't here abstaining.
Can I have a motion to approve?
I'm, oh, go ahead.
Thanks, Niles. Any second?
I will second.
Thank you, Rick. And all in favor of approving as amended? All opposed and abstaining. Thank you. All right, we have no public hearing tonight. We have no old business tonight, so we are moving on to new business, which is kind of some old business. We are looking at the site plan review for the Stop and Go Burwick at 355 Portland Street. Our map R70-12, and that is in the RCI zone.
All right. Hello, everybody. My name is Wyatt Page from Adar Engineering. I'm here representing Kevin Patel and the Stop and Go Burwick project. So for any of you who are new faces here, there's quite a bit of history behind this project as far as the town goes. We underwent a very lengthy review process throughout the back end of 2023 and the early part of 2024. And it was brought with controversy. There was much discussion. Both sides had to settle on a handful of things, and ultimately it got approved and signed. The findings of fact were signed in June. Since, the project went more than a year from the date of signing without commencement of use. The site permit expired. That was a lapse on the part of the applicant. We were under the impression that, as it's sometimes the case with other towns, that because the approval was contingent upon some pieces of DOT work, that we knew were going to take well more than a year, that that requirement wouldn't apply in this case. We were incorrect, and that's on us. All the same, we are now here to seek reapproval, or I guess technically on paper, it is a fresh approval of the Stop and Go project. However, that does put us under some new performance standards. Chiefly, the two in question that I've been, that I've heard from James that are in question is the now 3,000 square foot limit on the convenience store area, and I believe there is also a new screening requirement as well that would affect the side of the building on the Kind Farms side. There are some additional small changes that have occurred to the project as well. I'm just going to read the project narrative to get you guys an idea for anyone who needs a refresher or is new what we're proposing. So we're proposing to construct a 7,500 square foot stop and go business with 3,000 square feet of convenience store and now 3,000 square feet of deli, which is zoned as fast food or restaurant use fast food. The reason for the deli use is our client, Kevin Patel, had previously stated that he wanted to have a deli inside, very similar to his Stop and Go location in Elliott, where there is essentially a hot bar that has ready to consume food, chicken, burgers, sandwiches, that sort of thing. And he had always envisioned this location would have something similar, but on a larger scale. It sort of fortuitously works out that while it's not preferred that we have to go back and seek the 3,000 square feet be amended to be restaurant use fast food, it does enable Kevin to do more with it, and I'll have more details about that later. So 3,000 square feet of deli, 3,000 square feet of convenience store, and 1,500 square feet of storage space, which essentially just serves most of the property. There will be more discussion over the storage space and those square footages later, I'm sure. The site itself is complementing a six bay fueling station with a double walled reinforced underground storage tank and related facilities. There are two detention ponds on site meant for the management of stormwater. There is an onsite well that is meant to serve the parcel. There are also two monitoring wells, one that is co-installed with the well that serves the property, and one at the outlet of the lowermost detention pond, with the idea behind that second monitoring well being that it will pick up any signs of volatile organic compounds from runoff or spills of gasoline that would reach that point and potentially get into the groundwater as we're within 3,750, actually, it's 3,720 square feet now of the wellhead for South Burwick Water District. And you'll notice I changed that. Part of that is we've moved our, the underground storage tank a little bit up to the, I believe, northeast. This came at the request of Main DOT, who we've been in heavy talks with trying to get our turning lanes figured out. They also had some comments about the entrance that have been revised for this plan and are actually shortly to be revised slightly again, and I'll go over that more as well. But the tank was moved a little bit to the, closer to the edge of the travel area so that a large truck delivering gas does not have to pull quite so close to the front of the restaurant, and it can make a clean pass all the way around, ideally without disrupting customer traffic at all. All parts and the components of the fueling station were previously approved, reviewed, and approved by the Planning Board, South Burwick Water District, and a handful of other parties as well. I believe there was at least one consultant on there. Main Drinking Water Program gave their piece. I do not believe Drinking Water Program approved it, but I don't think they had jurisdiction to approve or deny anyway. It was more a recommendation. It's, and I'll let leave James to speak on this himself. It's my understanding that most of what was approved last time isn't necessarily up for relitigation. This time around, that this is mostly focusing on the new performance standards and how we do or do not comply to those.
I just, just, that was my recommendation for the board. Ultimately, it's up to the board how you want to handle it, but it would be my recommendation for anything that's not changing, that we already have a standard defining. We already have things in the record. So that would be, that would just be my recommendation, but ultimately it is up to the board.
Some other pieces here. Let's see. So the Stop and Go is going to be staffed by six full-time employees per week, operating 5:00 AM to, or 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. Refueling station itself will be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Waste will be installed in an enclosed dumpster in the southwest corner of the parcel, sort of toward the back of the establishment. And I believe Shipyard Waste Management was the company that was selected to hire it. There's also a full complement of erosion and sedimentation controls that go along with all of these improvements. In addition, I'm actually, can I, can I move this over there?
Yeah, I don't know how the whole microphone situation is working.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm gonna explain what I'm gonna point to before I do. There have been some changes to the entrance. It was requested that it be widened slightly by Main DOT, even though, and we had previously discussed this in our last set of approvals. Kevin stated that he wouldn't have any WB67 trucks delivering, and I believe it was Wes, who was previously on the board. Thank you. Wes, who was previously on the board, had some concerns about WB67 trucks if they happened to get over here, even though they're not intended as our design size for traffic, that they could be able to navigate safely. And so we now, we have our two exit lanes. There is now a raised two-inch concrete island with a beveled edge that is meant to deter any normal transportation vehicles of customers, would not, however, deter an 18-wheeler or large truck that might be delivering something or stopping at the site if need be. There is additionally a similar island that is really just more so of a buffer, like a truck turning apron, that is additionally meant to complement the ability of those trucks getting out without ever crossing the center line as proposed. There are additionally two turning lanes. There's a right turn lane into the site. There is a left turn lane into the site. Not shown on this sheet and not necessarily subject of the plan, but just for full transparency, Main DOT is requiring we also install a right turn lane onto Blackberry Hill Road, a left turn lane onto Blackberry Hill Road, and additionally that we construct a island at the Circuit Road intersection, which is just a little bit further down than Blackberry Road. If I remember correctly, our findings of fact, from our findings of fact last time, the town requires that we have the two turning lanes that are service our site installed and that we have DOT approval before the business is allowed to open and occupancy can be granted, which I guess by extension means all the other ones have to be done as well. As for progress that we have made since our last improvement has been in, we have a contractor, we have an architect. They're pretty much ready to break ground at this point. They're hoping that we can get this approval and that they can put the foundation in before it gets too cold. There's a chance it will have to be pushed to spring, but ideally we'd be looking at, if we hypothetically get a potential approval on a December 18th meeting, which I've heard is also somewhat up in the air for whether or not there will be a meeting on that date, then ideally they would start construction immediately as soon as we get the approval. Other than that, for the most part, it is the same project. I'm happy to give any refreshing questions or any further clarifications.
Thank you. Very comprehensive breakdown. I'm super familiar with this, even though I wasn't on the board when this was being seen. I had a lot of people asking me questions about it, and I did review today. So one of the things we have to look at is the proposed uses, because since your, since the previous approval, the board amended the ordinances, and so now you can't have a convenience store that's that big. So I would love to hear from my board to see what people have to say. I've got a couple of questions myself, but I would love to hear what others have to say. Rick, any comments or questions yet?
Well, I guess for me, it's a common sense question of taking 6,000 feet or 7,500 feet, square feet, and just saying, okay, we're gonna use this 3,000 for convenience store. 3,000 square feet for a deli sounds pretty big, and my concern, I guess, would be that the convenience store spills over into the deli area, so I'm wondering if there's any consideration for the separation of those two sections of square footage.
So here's, we're sort of up against a rock in a hard place with that, and normally, and James gave me a couple of examples of this, you know, if you picture gas stations that have a Dunkin' Donuts in it, usually they, the Dunkin' Donuts has its own little corner. It usually has like a shelf or two that usually is dedicated specifically to Dunkin' Donuts products or something like that, and it has its own little corner, sort of. There's another case which we don't want to model after, which is in, if you can picture like a highway gas station that also has like a McDonald's or a Subway in it, usually they're split into two distinct almost buildings, but they're in the same building, you know, maybe a firewall in between, something like that. Neither one of those super well applied to where we're at now, since we did not anticipate that the previous approval was going to expire the way that it did. We already have our floor plan, our architecturals, and our structural design done. We're trying our very best to keep true to that so as to not have to have our contractors and designers spend extra money, but we also need to adhere to the board's requirements. I'm gonna actually flip over to the floor plan page so I can point a few things out really quickly. So in short, and this is fairly rough, there isn't a very clear delineation as you're walking through it and as you're looking at the plan for what constitutes a convenience store, what constitutes the deli. And I actually got a bunch of new information from Kevin today as for what can be done to sort of make the board confident that these uses are actually being split up properly. And essentially what this floor plan-
Are you sharing that information with her?
Yeah, of course.
Like, soon?
Yes.
Good.
I'm getting to it. So we have basically this gray shaded area here is what we had envisioned designating for restaurant use. Right as you walk in the door here, there is a small area here that is going to be a cooled section that's going to have salads, prepared sandwiches, wraps, a variety of fresh foods that are in this sort of cooled area. There's additionally a coffee station here. There was actually, this was actually a topic of discussion last time over whether or not it would be considered a public water supply, and there was some discussion there. This coffee bar area essentially is going to have any hot beverages. Maybe there's, I don't know if he plans on doing tea or what else, whatnot, but basically there is a counter here for beverages, and then additionally, they have that cooler, go ahead.
Are there any seats in that area?
No.
If you would, as you're going through each park, could you tell us where there will be seats and where there will not be seats?
So there is only one area in this restaurant that has seats, and believe it or not, these seats are mostly intended for vehicle charging, though they are technically also associated with the restaurant. They are over here. It actually, for some reason, didn't end up shown on this plan. That's my fault. There are six barstool style seats at a counter down here in this section of the restaurant. Those seats were added in the previous project, and the intent behind those was that, as there are electrical vehicle chargers outside on that side of the building, that if someone was sitting waiting for their electric vehicle to charge, that they could come in and use that counter. It's my understanding that there isn't a seating requirement for restaurant use fast food under Burwick's ordinance, and frankly, if we add more seating, it's going to change our plumbing permits significantly and set us back quite a bit. Our intent not to add seating. It's not, well, it is a restaurant use for a deli, and I'm gonna explain more about what things this deli offers, where it's gonna go, that sort of thing. Additionally, it's intended to not be a sit-down establishment. It is restaurant use fast food. So, uh, some items, down. That includes prepared and made to order, are all be prepared in this counter area over here. It's a pretty sizable counter. Something like that, but larger with an additional section. This, you know, both cold, Italian, sort of thing. Like this, the cooler out front, which I mentioned previously, that has salads, some prepared foods. There's also going to be pastas. If you've ever been to Terracotta in Kittery, for instance, they have a number of pasta dishes that they pre-prepare, put in a- That sort of thing, also bringing that. That are in the cooler, that are specifically in the restaurant area. Those are not just gonna be drinks, any old whatever. Those are going to be specifically designated for restaurant items, pre-prepared, cold. And Kevin had also expressed that there would be some frozen items as well. Pizza is one of the things he wants to have. He's going to have fresh pizza, ready-made, as well as frozen pizza that people can then defrost, take home, that sort of thing. Those two would be stored in here. He even expressed that he might be doing like doughs and that sort of thing. I don't know how far that will get, but like your chicken Alfredo, spaghetti and meatball, that sort of thing would be in that cooler. Additionally, pastries. There's a small section of shelving shown here. There's, that would be, that would have their pastries. They have a handful of other things, fruit bowls, parfaits, various other items that were designated that, go ahead.
There's a section marked dry, I believe. What is that?
So that is also, I actually got permission, this is the one thing that is open to change. This dry goods area here, I assume, is what you're referring to?
Yeah.
So initially, when this floor plan was drawn out, which was prior to the discussion we're having now, that was intended to be for potential future use, assuming they get their liquor license. There is, to my understanding, a rule that requires that there be a locked room that has excess liquors to be stored in that only select employees will have access to. It was Kevin's intent to put tobacco, age-restricted products, and liquor in that section. He's, he's told me he's open to the idea of the dry goods section and as well as whatever the board deems necessary of storage and office to be redesignated however it suits the board so that we can ideally achieve approval. He did tell me that if push came to shove, he could feasibly have all of the dry storage serve the restaurant and not serve the convenience store, because I know it was the concern of Rick, as well as a few others that I've spoken to, that these uses have to be, you know, not spilling over, so to speak. So a lot of the dry products that would be used for the restaurant, breads, oils, paper plates, that sort of thing, any packaging that goes into the variety of foods that I've mentioned would all be stored ideally in this area as an accessory to the restaurant use. If it ends up that, you know, we want to fully designate it restaurant and not storage, that we could do that, but it was previously written in the findings of fact that it was 6,000 square feet of convenience store and 1,500 square feet of storage, not as an accessory to the, to the convenience store use. Let's see if there is anything else we have.
Could, could you clarify, sir, will there be items in the section marked dry that will be retail and, and customers can buy it, or is that all supplies?
It's all supplies.
Okay.
Yeah, so the dry good, this dry goods, pretty much everything back here, it's sort of a little hard to see on this plan in this lighting, everything behind the counter, this dry, dry goods storage, the utility areas, the walk-in coolers, and this whole area back here that is not shaded or hatched, pardon me, is not available for public access. It is storage. Kevin had also expressed that if need be, he could expand the office space, potentially have like a break area designated for employees, whatever it is that, you know, best satisfies the requirements of the, of the board so that we can keep our convenience store limited to 3,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you. We, I, we have a lot of questions.
I'm sure.
So I have a question that I'd like to ask James. After listening to that, like salads, wraps, cold stuff, coffee bar, pizzas, pastries. I'm wondering, so is our Cumberland Farms downtown classified as a restaurant and convenience store? Because that's all the same stuff that they have there, and I look at that as a convenience store, and it seems like a similar layout. Like you go into Comby's, they got pizza, they've got hot foods, they've got a coffee bar, they've got pastries, all of that stuff, and it's, it doesn't seem like a restaurant.
I'd have to check what the use is.
Yeah, I would, I'd be very interested to see that, because that, my, my biggest concern here is I'd love that you guys found a little loophole in this ordinance, like that makes me happy, actually, that people are trying to do things like that. It's cool. My concern is that we would be setting a precedent for any other future uses, for any other variety of businesses in the town of Burwick if we allow a bunch of different uses with no separation, and especially this is like, you know, I mean, it sounds like Cumberland Farms to me, just a bigger one. Like our Comby's is 4,000 square feet. This is just six or 7,500 square feet, whatever it is. So that's my, my question is, these uses sound a lot like that, which is not a restaurant. I'm looking at the restaurant definition.
Yeah, I'll do some research into that.
Okay.
And I have, I have some, I know I'm not James, and that he was-
Right, well, it's up to our interpretation also.
Of course.
So I'd rather have my board ask questions so that they're able to interpret properly and make the right decisions.
Yeah, I know. I have, I have some additional information about the legal separation of these two entities as well.
Yeah.
We're open to the idea of giving the deli and restaurant area its own separate name. Kevin has already told me it's going to be separated into its own LLC, which is apparently what he does in his Elliott location, where I think he actually has it titled. It's like, it's something like Pit Beef or something like that. Not the most appealing name, but he has like a separate name for the deli business. And this is done for tax purposes. There's like a foods tax. I'm not super clear on that part of it, but it is literally split into sort of two whole businesses. The kitchen has a much higher margin than the store, and it behooves them to keep it separated, you know, from, you know, from a legal sense as well. And at, at least Kevin has done a lot of research on other gas stations. He owns a handful as well. It's likely that the Cumberland Farms that you mentioned is not zoned as a restaurant.
Right.
It's also likely that they do not have a separate business name and a separate LLC for-
Well, that's, that's, that's not, the town doesn't really, you know, as a planning board, we don't care about LLCs and businesses. We care about, is somebody else going to come in across the street and say, well, you know, we want to open a nightclub, but if we call it a nightclub- to open a nightclub, but if we call it a nightclub and a restaurant, then we can get, you know, an extra 5,000 square feet and get it approved and, and whatever. That's, we don't, we have to prevent somebody from taking advantage of our ordinance, and that's our job, that's, to protect the town of Berwick. Don, do you have any questions?
Nope. Mine was the same as Rick's.
Niles?
Yeah, first, you said the gas station part will be open 24 hours.
So that's just the gas pumps outside, yes.
Right. Will there be an employee on site 24 hours?
I believe it was, if, I think it's in the findings of fact, and I believe the answer to that was yes, that there should be someone on site at all times for attendance of those pumps. I know we went through great lengths during our previous review to go over the various contingencies and things that need to be in place, and if you recall, I don't, I genuinely don't, I believe there was going to be someone on site at all times to deal with that, and I don't know if it's in our findings of fact, but, um, I believe-
If it isn't, you would agree for that to happen?
Sure. Yeah.
All right. You drafted this proposal, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Can you explain your understanding of the difference between a convenience store and a deli fast food restaurant?
So, the fast food restaurant, as if, are we talking about in layman's terms or in terms of what the board says, or what, sorry, what the ordinance says?
You know, I'm, I'm just a simple guy, so let's do it in layman's terms.
Okay, so, in the, so in layman's terms, a deli or a fast food, or a fast food restaurant, you know, it's an establishment that you go to, they have foods either pre-prepared or made to order that are served to the customer, it could be a whole variety of things, it could range anything from a food truck, which qualifies, at least in the terms of the Berwick ordinance, as a restaurant-use fast food. It could be a small, like a cafe inside of like a, like a library, that sort of thing, sure.
I, I'd rather you explain to me how you would define what a convenience store is.
I would define a convenience store as an establishment that has a variety of packaged goods, chips, snacks, drinks, beverages, soft drinks, alcohol, a variety of products that are available for purchase, generally not foods that are prepared on site, although in many cases, for convenience stores, there are often hot goods in particular that are often made. If you picture your 7-Eleven, that sort of thing, often they will have a warmer that includes breakfast sandwiches, that sort of thing. It's our intent to keep those as separated as we can, but typically, a convenience store in the traditional sense doesn't necessarily include, you know, warm products ready to eat. Like, a convenience store could also fit the bill of like, um, what's the name of that one? Uh, not Cumberland Farms, the, I'm blanking on the name of it. There's a place in Cape Elizabeth that's, like, it's almost like a grocery store sort of thing. There's, like, a general indicator for me for the difference between a convenience store and a grocery store is a grocery store has produce, a convenience store is like, almost closer to like a Walgreens, that sort of thing, like, where you have snacks that are like, like, if you think of a convenience store in a Walgreens, they have all these snack foods, all of these dry goods that are pre-prepared, packaged by a company other than the one that is operating the business, and they sell all of these goods to the public.
So, will all of the food here, there will be food prepared on site for purchase to the, to the customer?
Yes.
And that would be, as I understand it, and what you're calling the restaurant-delie fast food section?
Yes.
So, a prepackaged food item, sandwiches made in the morning, wrapped up, label put on, that would go in the convenience store section, or would that go in the restaurant?
That would go in the restaurant section for ours.
Without naming any existing businesses, there are those who sell prepackaged food to be consumed, but are not, it's not made fresh upon order, it's already there. So for you, that's a convenience store or that's a restaurant?
Sorry, so the question is, the pre-prepared foods that are prepared earlier in the day and packaged, for our intents and purposes, since it's all going to be in the kitchen under a separate LLC, our answer is that it goes with the restaurant. They have staff, like, not all of the staff that's on site is going to be working the restaurant. Six employees full-time, I imagine probably two or three of them are going to be on restaurant use probably at all times, if that helps elaborate any.
If I may, Wyatt, um, do you anticipate that all purchases made from either of those two LLCs are made under one point-of-sale position, or will they have a separate?
Point-of-sale being like where you check out?
Cash, you have a register.
So it's my understanding that there are going to be two cash registers, that there's one at the deli and one for the actual convenience store itself? I actually couldn't tell you off the top of my head, if you could hypothetically bring them to the same.
I ask because I know I've been to the Elliott store and everything-
That has all at one point-of-sale, yes.
So I assume, and it's none of my business, but I assume it's separated electronically through the computer system, what purchase goes for the restaurant, what purchase goes to the convenience store.
Yes.
It seems like there could be a lot of gray area here, because convenience stores sell a lot of consumable products, and delis sell exclusively consumable products. And so, my question, concern is, is the deli going to sell anything that is something that would go along with a consumable product but is, is pre-brought in from another company? In other words, are they going to have a beverage cooler for their own beverages through the deli while the convenience store also sells beverages in a beverage cooler?
So, I know the original vision was that, yeah, you can go in and you can get both of these things in the same way, as for whether or not it's going to have like its own section for drinks, I don't know for sure. I know there was some discussion when I was talking about this with Kevin, that if something like that were necessary, he could have a section of cooler where you can do like a meal deal, where you get, there's a specific section in these two rows of shelves that are sort of here and here, directly in front of the restaurant area, where if you get something from that section of shelves and this section of cooler, that you could get a discounted rate if you purchase it with a sandwich or something from the deli. So, really, we're open to any way that we can split this that does satisfy. But, there isn't, I don't have a clear answer for you for if it's all going to be one point-of-sale. My assumption is that there are two points of sale. As for the intermingling, I genuinely can't tell you at the moment.
Okay. Fair enough.
Want to, just to refresh and go over this again with you, Wyatt. Number three, under conditions, no gasoline shall be dispensed outside normal business hours and when the station is not adequately staffed by a certified AB operator.
Yes.
So I don't recall anything about 24 hours. Was that, did I miss that the last time?
It came up.
I don't think it go bad.
It came up, but this is what went down on paper.
Is it outside business hours or there's a certified operator? So that could read as, it could be 24/7 if they're, it has to either be normal-
If there's an AB tank operator on site.
Yeah, it has to be either, it has to be either business hours or there's a certified, I think there has to be an AB certified.
I know there has to be an AB certified person on site, and that's, I think that's a normal requirement, but it was like literally codified in our findings of fact that under no circumstances should any gas be dispensed if that operator is not on site. And I know Kevin's intent was to have either himself, who's an AB certified operator, and I believe his store manager, and possibly one other person as well, where at least one of them, maybe two, would be on site at all times.
I know, in the new standards, it does say that 24/7 gas dispensing is allowed, provided it meets the state standards.
Daniel, do you have any questions?
For the sake of clarity on my end, because I couldn't find my copy of that, the darker gray area, that is designated as the restaurant?
Yes.
The hatched is the convenience store, and the white on the end is purely for storage, and that is all storage, including like refrigerated storage, or just?
So, refrigerated storage, this area back here, this long strip, it's actually split into two different hatches, but-
Okay.
This area back here is a walk-in cooler, the cold storage would be in this area. So, you'll notice a lot of this is hatched out for the restaurant, that's your produce, your cold cuts, any, anything that has to be stored there. I don't imagine he's going to be like grinding meat on site or anything like that, so I don't imagine there's any equipment associated with it, but there is a great deal of cold storage for the pizza dough, the yogurt, the berries, all of these things that are perishable that aren't, you know, a beer or something you'd normally attribute to a convenience store would be stored in this section back here.
All right. So now we're supposed to discuss the process moving forward. I guess we want to look at application completeness so that we can move forward, because I, I've, we've all got some questions that sounds like need to be answered. I would really like to see how this is, like, I want to see what the actual differences are between this and Cumberland Farms, because I haven't heard one thing yet that strikes me like, oh yeah, that is a restaurant, that's not this. And just for the sake of argument, I guess, but I guess we need to look at application completeness. Would you agree?
No.
All right. I would need a movement for application completeness.
Okay. I'll make a movement, a motion that we review the application for completeness.
All right. Do we have a second?
Oh, a second.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Do we have any further questions or comments? All right, and all in favor of voting this application complete in order to move forward? All right, it looks like we have unanimous for application completeness, so we want to determine if a site walk is necessary, schedule that, and then schedule the public hearing. Do we want a site walk? You've been, you've been-
I've been.
I haven't physically walked on the site, I'm very familiar with it.
I haven't, I did not walk the site the last time.
Okay.
I did.
Okay. You have not.
I have not, but I'm certainly familiar with the site.
Yeah, familiar, I'm familiar enough with the site that I don't feel like I need to stand on it.
No.
Okay, so we can successfully say that we're going to not-
Yeah, I don't think there's enough changes to the geography of everything that we need to review.
No, it seems like a lot of semantics is what we're working with here.
And just to throw out there, if anyone does want to go walk the site, all of our old grade stakes are still out there. I hope the marker on the side of the stakes is still visible, but you can see edge of pavement, edge of building, should all be there still.
Excellent. Um, yeah, so then, public hearing? Maybe December 18th?
That might be something to talk, well, so, by, well, we can talk about it now if you want.
Yeah, let's talk about it.
By policy, the board doesn't meet December 18th.
Oh.
You'd have to, you'd have to, you'd have to vote to-
Add a meeting.
Have it on that meeting.
Okay, let's, let's vote. Do we want to meet December 18th? All in favor? All opposed? All right, we're not meeting December 18th, so.
Do you want to meet December 11th? I'm just kidding.
I'm going to be in Aruba, so you can. So that means the first week in January, the first Thursday in January? Well, the first Thursday in January is January 1st, so then we're looking at the third, third week in January, which is January 15th. Gives plenty of time to get questions answered, it looks like.
So there isn't a meeting earlier, it's just the 15th?
Just the 15th.
Got it.
Good? Anything else? No, I guess we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
We'll see you on the 15th. Moving on, in new business, land use ordinance amendments, I don't, oh, for clarification purposes, section 7.21, and this was something that we wanted to work on clarifying because the Board of Appeals is having some questions.
As regards to access to lots?
Yeah. So, we had a few things with Board of Appeals, and I think there's a lot of development pressure and just questioning in this section 7.21. 7.21 has been confusing for 10-plus years. I mean, it's been going, going back to when it was put into the ordinance, I think there's been legal questions and challenges. So, to that end, and we've, we've found that we had, we didn't have some definitions. I don't think we have a definition of discontinued road, that type of thing. So, what I'm showing here is kind of the starting point of, I think, I think what I'd like to propose is potentially wholesale replacing some of these definitions, because it's like an interlocking system of like, you're pointing to one definition, which you need a definition to support this definition, so it's like access road, access to lots, the bank ground gravels, the road base, discontinued road, what's, what's that? A driveway, like a, a driveway isn't a right-of-way, but you drive on a driveway, you drive on a right-of-way.
Sometimes a driveway goes right over a right-of-way.
Exactly. Yes. So, also, on the page here, essentially what I'd, because it's, it's, it gets really confusing trying to like cross out things and try to fit in with the ordinance of like, how to make it work, I just think potentially just wholesale-
Rewrite 7.2.
Rewrite, rewrite it to make it work.
The, the one thing that I picked up on that I think that we should change from what's here, is above the table, that little blurb, the last sentence says verification may include consultant time by a third-party engineer at the application's expense. I think it should, shouldn't say shall. I don't think, I think may, I think the less we leave up to the interpretation of boards, the better, and the more consulting that we can get, the better. And it's not costing the town anything, and if some-
I actually have a different version.
Okay.
It's a different, I'll just, it should be the last.
Oh, this, you know what, this is the version that you sent us in an email that I printed out to do my homework, so.
This is, is this the one you're talking about?
Yeah, there's something I actually just put there today.
Oh, okay.
Sorry to throw it at you last minute, but.
You said it should say shall, the note?
Well, the note that I have might be totally-
Okay, I'll give you a five.
Yes.
Thank you.
You know, well.
Yeah. We're going to work through this still, right? This is just the first time we're looking at this, okay? Because I would like to find the loopholes in this.
Yeah. And we actually have two members here from Board of Appeals.
That's great, we have some open chairs that we're going to come up. Or if you want to talk about any of the issues that you guys have had, I'm happy to open up a podium for that. Help us help you, right?
Thank you for returning the laser pointer.
I, what I find being on the Board of Appeals is that the intent of the land use ordinance and the way it was written, was written for a different time in Berwick. And we all know what we meant, everybody knew what was meant and what, the way it was written and what it meant. Now, it seems like everyone has lawyers that are looking for the loopholes, that are trying to develop Berwick as much as possible, where I think this land use ordinance was written to protect Berwick, not that, not that what we're doing isn't, but there wasn't so much pressure from development, and it was more what people knew was meant when it was written. I think there are very few people around anymore that know what was intended, and I think this is resulting in some big issues, because everybody is looking to max out and get the most that they can out of what our land use ordinance is, which was written for another time. And so, I think what happens, what has happened to the land use ordinance a lot is, you know, when something has come up, then people write a new paragraph, and if something comes up, they add a sentence, that kind of a thing, and then it makes it confusing for, and even more loophole-y, because people are saying, well, if, if, if no one says anything about this kind of road or that kind of road, then we have to look for something that is similar. And I know that happens on the, I forget what it's called, the big, the big, the big, the big table where you have uses.
The land use table, yeah.
And, and, you know, if, if you don't have a use, well, you pick a use that's close. Well, I don't see that that's what we're supposed to be doing in the land use ordinance itself. You know, like, oh, there's no discontinued road? Oh, well, but that's the closest we can get, so we're going to use the rules for the discontinued road. No. So I think that's what's happening, and I, I do feel like things need to be- So, I think that's what's happening, and I do feel like things need to be updated a lot.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. Yeah, please.
Rick Engels on the chair of the Board of Appeals. The one other piece that I really, I know it would be difficult to do, but every time we put a lot of stringent requirements on, it affects the one person, the person that's got a single lot and he's just trying, or she's just trying to develop it to put in for his kid or something like that. So we have to be really conscious, to me, of, big developers can afford to put in $100,000 road. If I want to put a road in so that my kids can access my property, I really don't want to have to spend $100,000. And I know later on down the road it's going to get sold, so I understand the consequences, but I think we still have to be conscious of that because I don't want to take the rights of the individual landowners to do something on their property vice the rights of, I'll use Steve Brown as an example, but I think we know a developer that's coming in and is going to make millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars when he develops his property, he can afford to do, or she can afford to do that where the individual landlord probably can't. So when we look at this, please look at it with that understanding as well because we don't want to limit individual landowners so that they can't even develop anything on their own property.
Hundred percent, I agree with that. Hundred percent. And I think most people in town would agree with that.
That's part of the reason for like the engineering being a may, because there's some ways like with a bankroll and gravel base that we can, we can, we can observe and we can confirm that the materials put down. So like, if someone has to put in the driveway, they have to require an engineer to, you know, it just adds a couple thousand dollars to that cost, and it can make it.
I get it. But you do look at the fact that, you know...
I think we could start it.
That, that, you know, you may, you may have a, you know, large parcel, 10 acres of land, and you might split it in half and give half of it to your daughter, and then eventually, we're all going to die, so, and then, you know, your daughter sells five, you know, half of her acreage to somebody else, and then they want to put in three lots back there, and we don't have compaction tests of that first part of the road. And then the road is failing, you know, it's, there is like a slippery slope with all this.
Part of that, that's something we've experienced too. So we're trying to, we're trying to codify and develop a system because we've been running into a lot of this stuff. Also with NFPA, we put in this place midstream without ordinance amendment, but because of the authority having jurisdiction, the fire chief, we've started implementing, even though the two-dwelling unit standard's 15 feet, NFPA's 20 feet, but we can achieve that with shoulders.
Right, I've noticed that.
So we're looking at codifying that, but also for like existing roads, we're looking at codifying like test pits in a process to be like, all right. And we're trying to think about what's a feasible way for the average homeowner, but also be able to confirm that base so we don't get in that slippery slope.
Well, I mean, what, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, so what have other more progressive towns maybe done? Or have we looked into?
Well, I think there's a lot of that language that's in, in this. So that would, I think it, I think it's mostly there, just fine-tuning some of the, some of the language and process. I'll make sure to get a clean copy ahead of time so you have time to do it.
That would be good, yeah, to, like, a week ahead of time so that you can look at it. Some of us need time.
I don't believe we need, and then a third-party inspector for every road. So to make that mandatory is a little prohibitive for a lot of people, like Rick says.
Right, it's just hard to like, say like, well, for developers, yes, for homeowners, no. Like, we also can't do that.
It's got to be a clear standard of like, it's some complexity or length or something.
Square footage? Square area?
Yeah, area, percentage of lot, whatever there's.
But when I hear this discussion, I, it makes me a little nervous that people who bought land and knew that they couldn't divide it because of the road, they shouldn't be allowed now to divide it with the road if you change it. You should be very careful doing that. Because the point of that is not just to have decent town roads, but to keep development out of R3. And if you start allowing homeowners, just, you know, it is too bad that you can't give your kid that piece of property. But you knew it when you bought it, and you're just, it's just, all I can picture is Boston suburbs. Let's not do it to Berwick. Let's keep our R3.
Yeah, I would like more time to look at whatever you have.
Well, we have till, we have till February.
I mean, more time before I want to discuss it further, but yeah. And thank you guys for coming and sharing that. We don't get to see that other side.
I think like nothing would be, so for like a one-dwelling unit standard, the standard is actually being, can I, can I talk?
Yeah, of course, yeah, no, thank you for asking.
I'm learning too.
It's all right.
So, what's essentially being proposed for a one-dwelling unit standard, the standard is actually going up to a 12-foot base and then eight feet of shoulders.
Not a 12-foot base, you just said 12-foot base.
Yeah, 12-foot road base with then eight feet of shoulders.
With width.
To achieve. And the shoulder is six feet, or, yeah, six feet of gravel. Six inches, six feet would be a lot.
That ought to pass the compaction test.
That might be a little cost prohibitive.
And at this point, I'm not proposing to change like three or more dwelling units. Just do it around, just do it downstate.
Yeah, that's, that's good. I think that, I mean, we've, we've all grown up with that two-dwelling units rule. I don't think that...
I wouldn't be surprised if the legislature, if the rate they're going, that's one of the, Berwick does it differently. I think Berwick probably has one of the most strict road standards, so it may not be as prevalent in Maine to be like, we need to change that law.
Right.
But I wouldn't be surprised.
South Berwick's are very similar to ours, though. I've reviewed, I've reviewed their, their road standards before.
I think it's three. I think Elliott might be three as well. We have more to come.
Yeah, great. With that being said, I will open up the second public comment for anything not under the purview of the Berwick Planning Board right now. Closing public comment, informational items.
There will be paving of the sidewalks tomorrow.
Oh God, don't say the sidewalk word in this.
The, so that will finish Gronin's section. Curtis now is about to mobilize the next week or so to do the towns portion. So that includes a sidewalk on the left side of Sullivan coming up here, and underground utilities and light pole bases, and kind of finishing the other side of the street.
Cool.
Yeah.
Looks great.
When are you thinking that'll be all completed?
I don't like what should be completed, I don't know.
Oh, okay. I wouldn't say it on record if I didn't know.
December or...
Save that conversation for another time, maybe by our January 15th meeting. All right, adjournment perhaps?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?